Be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting material has been provided. The members of the body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business to ensure accurate meeting minutes. The chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment. Any comment, questions, or motions, please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in a conversation with other members, please do so through the chair and take care to identify yourself. Today, we we will have public comment. It will be limited to three minutes per person. One minute if you return to the mic. Please try not to repeat if someone before you has said the same thing. Billy.
I just wanted to say I will give a verbal warning with one minute remaining and the three minutes per comment.
Okay, great. So I'd look for a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
A motion made by Nat, seconded by Joe. Nat?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Barry?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So before is Stephen here? Stephen, if you could just give me a quick minute. I want to just go over the timeline on this because unfortunately conspiracy theories abound. And there is a very good reason we are where we are. Yeah, now I cannot find.
David, I'm happy to do that. I was planning to, if you want me to do it, and you can see if that satisfies what you intended.
Perfect, Stephen. If you want to go ahead and if I want to add something, I'll
Absolutely. Okay, so I see that there's sixty-five people on this Zoom. That's an impressive note for democracy. Great. I don't know that any of the annual town meeting hearings usually get such a turnout. So that's great. Just so people understand what's happening here. Article fifty-nine was originally proposed as a citizens warrant article. It was reviewed by the planning board and received a positive motion, a motion to approve. Later on, there was a discussion about the three articles related to the bylaw, which were Articles sixty, sixty-one, and sixty-two. And as part of that discussion, I, as the sponsor, agreed to essentially table Article fifty-nine. And I requested that the planning board change its motion from approval to take no action, which is a essentially a negative motion. And the FinCom at the same time changed this motion or adopted, I think, its first motion on that article in which it agreed with the planning board and actually gave a comment explaining what was happening at the time. So if anybody wants to see the footnote that explained what was happening, it's in the FinCon comments, which is published in the warrant, which basically says that because there was no action by the court on this, it was determined that this article was unnecessary. Lo and behold, the same day the planning board changed its motion, later in the day, Judge Vay released the decision in the Board versus grape case, and that no longer was factually true. So I then contacted the planning board and requested that they revert to their motion to approve and also that they adopt some housekeeping edits to the article that would make it both legally better and also more clearly addressing the issues raised in the judge's decision, but with actually no substantive real changes to the article. So before I actually talk about what the article says, does that sort of cover what you had hoped, David?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, thanks.
Is everyone happy with that summation?
So yeah, so where we are today is we're, the planning board at my request is looking at both the edits to the article and their own motion on whether it should be approved. I've heard through the grapevine that this is some way to try to subvert town meeting as there wouldn't need to be a vote or something, which actually makes no sense if you know anything about town meeting. What happens here will only impact how the article is heard at town meeting, whether or not it's heard as a positive motion from the planning board, or if it's, if it's not, if the planning board doesn't change his motion, then I would bring an amendment and we would vote on that. So a lot of this is really just about partially what the planning board's position is and also the process under which this would go forward at town meeting. But it doesn't actually have any substantive impact on legal, on any legal changes in regulations, like this meeting doesn't change anything. Any rules. So Article fifty-nine does essentially three things. The first thing it does is in the definition of commercial in the zoning bylaw, it already says that the private residential uses, excuse me, are considered to be not commercial. And this would just add in a clarification that that includes rental thereof of those properties. Interestingly enough, Judge Vay's decision says that the question of whether or not STRs are a commercial use is the entirely wrong question. And he declined to answer it because he said that they are actually residential uses, not commercial uses. And then he goes into the question of whether or not they are properly articulated and listed use or not. But he did agree that the the question of whether or not it's commercial is not the right question. So on one hand, I think I would leave that clarification in there, but on the other hand, I don't think it actually changes the current legal state of the nation. So but the first thing it does is clarify that rental of residential homes is not a commercial activity. Then it creates a definition of long-term rental and a definition of short-term rental and puts those in the zoning code as yeses in every district except the commercial industrial district. And that is the direct response to Judge Vay's decision. Judge Vay did not say that short-term rentals are legal or illegal. What he said was in order to be legal, they need to be expressly provided for in the zoning code. And Nantucket zoning code doesn't mention short-term rentals at all. It doesn't prohibit them. It doesn't allow them. It doesn't address them. And of course, the town's position in advance of that decision was, we don't need to. We've done it since nineteen seventy-two. We've done it since before then. We think it's legal, or at least that was the position taken by the building commissioner, supported by the zoning board, supported by town council. But the judge said no. Under the stellar case, the Lynnfield case, you have to be more specific. If you want it to be a use allowed under your zoning code, you have to expressly provide for it. And what he said was that residential use as an STR is a residential use, but because of its transient nature compared to a non-transient, some other kinds of residential uses, that it was required to be more expressly provided for. Which is fine. And so that's all this stuff. It creates that use and it allows it in the district. So if this is adopted, it goes back to the exact legal position that we were in before the, before the decision.
Excuse me for a second, Stephen. Can everyone please make sure that that they're muted because we're getting a lot of cross-talk here. I think it's difficult for people to focus and difficult for Stephen to explain his case. Beth, please. Meg, can you mute her, please?
I'm showing Beth as muted. Where is this coming from?
Coming from Beth.
Beth Jaganowski?
Yes.
Oh, she's muted.
She lights up when we hear her, so.
I'm seeing her as unmuted too, Meg.
Yeah.
Dance, okay, fifteen minutes, please. Thank you.
Okay.
Stephen, you can continue. Jaganowski, if you can hear us, please mute your computer or your phone. Thank you. Thank you. Stephen, go ahead.
No, no problem. So my point here is that the judge basically said your zoning code doesn't address short-term rentals. If you want them or don't want them, you should address them more specifically. And so that's what this does. And it is intended not to change the law, but to return the law to the status it was, or at least the way it was understood by the town prior to that decision. Hold on one second. So I and that's all, and that's, that's all that basically does is put those out there. The third thing that the warrant article does is require that all of the people who would be engaging in short-term rental activity have to be in compliance with and get a certificate of registration from the Board of Health in order to participate in this. And I put in there that they would have to have it beginning in twenty twenty-five. If there was, if the Board of Health is actually ready and up and going to do everything in twenty twenty-four, that would be fine. I don't, you know, but I just want to note that I put that, I put a notation for that to that specific requirement to kick in for next year. So, so those are the three things that this warrant article does. What it doesn't do is put in any rules for regulating STRs. And that's very intentional. And it's not because I don't think that there should be rules for STRs. It's because I don't think they should be in the zoning code. I think as the planning board might know, but I'll repeat it just for the, for the record here. The state law that created short-term rental taxes, I think in two thousand eighteen, has a uncommon provision in it that allows for the regulation of short-term rentals under the bylaw instead of the zoning law, zoning code, which means that the town can adopt those rules by a majority vote instead of by a two-thirds vote. So it's actually much easier to put those rules in place by doing it through the bylaw. And so the idea here is that this is the addition of the use to the zoning code and then regulations of that would be separately through the bylaws. There's an example, there's two good examples of that. One is that we have already adopted the registration system, which has health and safety issues and some other rules in place that already exist and which the town put in place when it thought that it didn't need to change its zoning code. And secondly, Article sixty, which I know the board is also in support of, would create rules that would limit corporate ownership and some other areas of short-term rentals. And that's not intended to be all of the rules that we need, but it's intended to be some of them. Frankly, I think the registration system is the best one because having that registration system gives the town the ability to tell people no, you can't have a certificate because you're not following the rules. But because that registered, because the bylaw system can be changed with a majority vote, it's much better for, I think, everybody to put the regulations in there. And so a good example, so it does, so we're not in a position where you've created like this grandfathering and now you can't go back because all of the rules are going to be somewhere else. And so the example I would use that I think might make it easier for people to understand is that when you say you can have a restaurant or a hotel or something like that in a zone, it's allowed in all those zones. Okay, it's allowed anywhere in that zone, but you still then need to meet Board of Health rules and fire code rules and parking requirements and get all kinds of other permits. So just because you're allowed by zoning doesn't mean you could have it there. You have to meet all the rules that are in place. And that's what STRs would be like. So they would be allowed anywhere, but it would be subject to the other rules that people would have to meet. And those rules are in an area where it's going to be easier to put them in and easier to change them as we go. So that's, that's, that's what we're doing here. So I think this is a critical piece. And I could get into why this article should be adopted or not if we want to get into the why, but I'll leave it at the what for now.
Thank, thank you, Stephen. Board members, any questions for Stephen? No, okay. I'm going to go to the public here. Please, this is not the place to debate this against other articles. This is a place to have your questions answered. We're happy to hear from all of you, but let's save the debate for the, for the floor of town meeting, please. Okay? Billy, hands up? Diane? You don't mute Diane. You're muted.
There. Now do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I I am speaking as my dumb self, not a member of the HDC. So what I don't understand is trying to decide which you should head to is to say, what is a technical description of a commercial short-term rental?
I don't we don't have a definition in any bylaw that, that would say something as a commercial rental, to be honest with you. I think unfortunately, that's part of the conundrum the community is in is, is people are using these terms that have no certain definition. We could create one here, but I don't think that's fair. Stephen?
So Mr. Chairman, just to piggyback that, there's a lot of people who have different ideas about what that is. And I think that the first step in limiting commercialization of these is Article sixty, which would prohibit short-term rentals by corporate ownership. And I think that if people want to go into a further definition of that, then that would require an additional bylaw change that could be done at the fall town meeting. And I think there, we don't need to get into the details of that, but I think that's a really good example of ways that people could regulate STRs and that would not be quote-unquote grandfathered through the zoning article. You could still do it with a bylaw change in the fall.
The current definition of commercial use has the phrase other than residential uses. And so again, I think that's part of the, part of the reason we are where we are is because of the ambiguity in, in the laws and the terms surrounding this. So I don't think it's fair to ask anyone to give, give you a definition. I think if you had five people, they would offer you five different definitions.
Yeah. I'm sure, or maybe even ten. Thank you, David. There's so many questions. And you think you're right, and then something comes up and then it looks like you're wrong. Thank you very much.
It's confusing. Thank you, Diane. Billy, any hands up? I can't see. Is that Frank Daly with a hand up?
I am, I am not seeing any hands up.
Oh, that's, that's my pointer, sorry. No, no hands up? Let's give it another minute. Board members, questions, concerns while we wait? Still no hands up. This is going to be the last call for hands up for any questions. Leslie Forbes? Welcome. You're muted. Thank you.
And can you give an example of, additional example of regulations that could happen through general bylaws? For instance, could you put in something about number of rentals you could have or the length of a rental or and would these regulations apply to all people who STR not, or who are registered? Not, you wouldn't have different classes of STR renters?
No, we wouldn't. If you can give me one second, I'm going to read to you directly from the state law that tells you how we can do that.
Thank you.
Give me one sec here to track it down. Okay, so this is in the Acts of two thousand eighteen, chapter three, three, seven from the state. It is paragraph fourteen, or I'm sorry, section fourteen. I want to say it's paragraph two. I'm not sure, but it's it gives us the right to regulate the existence or location of operators under this section within the city or town, including regulating the class of operators, the number of local licenses or permits issued to operators under this section, and the number of days a person may operate and rent out an accommodation in a calendar year. So I would venture to say that that's pretty sweeping in the authority it gives us. And I think the important part here is to remember that, that, that these regulations don't have the same protections as they would in zoning. So there's no pre-existing non-conforming issues if we use it in a bylaw. Does that help you, Leslie?
Yes.
Okay, so no, it would apply to everyone across the board when that regulation is made. There would not be, there wouldn't, and that's the concern about doing it in zoning, right, is that we would create a situation where we have pre-existing non-conforming protections. But that's the beauty of what the state has given us is that we don't have those protections anymore. Shelley?
Yeah, I just, so today's meeting, prior to today's meeting, the board's position was no action, correct?
No action based on, on a request from the proponents of a couple of other articles and and the fact that the decision had not come down from Judge Vay yet.
So today's meeting is to tell anybody interested that that position has changed?
Yes.
And you're now supporting this Article fifty-nine?
Originally in February, when we originally heard this, Shelley, it received a positive recommendation with one member abstaining. It got a three-to-one vote in support. So from there, we went to take no action because it was asked of us by the proponent, Mr. Cohen, because he was working out a deal on the general bylaw portions with Mr. Copco and the Select Board. And so at his urging, we changed our recommendation to take no action. And after that, the judge came down and Mr. Cohen requested us to re-review it.
Back to your original position.
Well, we'll see what the vote says, but I think that's his hope.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anybody else out there, Billy?
No, I'm seeing no more hands raised, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Back to the board. Any more questions? Stephen, do you?
Just real quick, Mr. Chairman. Last person that spoke, I think she might have came on a little late, didn't catch your beginning, but I just, I just there's so much timing involved here and the printer, how, how the warrant gets printed, when it gets printed, the advertising issues with these things. I mean, there's a lot of you know, things that create things to be delayed. And the other thing is the collaboration that was going on in February was that's what we want. That's what, and we agreed to that. And that is the reason we're here now. And that is the reason that the take no action happened. So you know, I just want the public to understand that, that, that this is, you know, it is democracy in theory. I mean, however you want to say it. I mean, that's the process that we have for this. And the warrant says what we did now because of the collaboration effort that was taking place to come up with some changes or whatever with the Copco article. And we obliged to that. And that's what happened. So anyway, we have short memories and it's hard to follow all this stuff. And it's no fault of anyone that this stuff is complicated.
Yep.
So that's all. Thank you.
Diane, you have your hand up again? You're muted, Diane.
I just wanted a quick thing. Because it was brought up, there was only like two percent or two-point-five percent of commercial or whatever you want to call them, buildings. How do we know? Who, who does, who do you go and list? So we have some idea of how many are in our residential somewhere else. How do we know how many short-term rentals we have going in the year?
So Diane, I think that with the new registration process, we will know exactly how many we have every year. I think the number previous year was seventeen hundred, I believe. I could be wrong there. I think, again, you're referring to corporate when you, when you refer to that small percentage, you're referring corporate owned. And I think through the registration process, if they're not outlawed straight out, which I think that there's, there's, that's a possibility if it passes at ATM, is in the registration process, they will have to tell us how, what form of ownership this is under. And then we will know whether it's a corporate owned or whether it's, you know, owned in the myriad of other ways that a property can be held.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep. Penny, die. Can't hear you, Penny. You don't look muted, though.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
While she's trying to get her mic going, does it make sense to post that timeline that Megan created? Just for public record and then we can see how we went through the steps. So it's not like we just
if you could do that, just put it on the screen for a minute so everyone could see it. I think that's a great idea, Joe.
All right, thank you.
Are you seeing this?
Ah, yes.
I'm at from calendar meeting.
So as everyone can see, the above part is just, is the overview of over the years, what we've been through and then the fifty-nine timelines below. All right, great. Has Penny been able to sort out? Penny, the floor is yours. If you can sort out your microphone. She might be rebooting. Just fell right off. Let's give her a second to reboot. I think it's important to understand that that there is a path through fifty-nine for continued meaningful regulation and that fifty-nine isn't isn't a vehicle to just allow them everywhere, anywhere. I think that most people on this board, well, I can't speak for them, but I can speak for myself that I think continued regulation is important in keeping a business that, that happens on this island in, in check and making sure it works for us. So I don't think that is lost through fifty-nine. I think it gives everyone an equal footing and it really depends on, on the community's willing to, willingness to continue to engage in this discussion and further regulate.
Mr. Chair, if I could just piggyback your statement, I should note, you know, you told Ms. Forbes that there's no grandfathering in these bylaws and that basically almost any legal regulation could be adopted. That's not your opinion or my opinion. That's coming from town council. So I think it should just be out there that, that that's what town council has been, been telling the town, not you, not just, you know, me as a proponent or you as the chair.
And it's written, it's written plainly in the law passed that state for anyone to read. So I think it's important that everyone should, should read that when, when they're coming to a decision. Charity?
Oh, good afternoon. I'm wondering what you expect would be the submission of a general bylaw? Would that come from the town or can that come as a a citizen warrant article?
I think it can come from anyone, Charity. I mean, I would, I would hope that, that the planning board might take another shot at more regulation and I would expect that there would be citizens articles as well. I mean, that's that's the beauty of it. And really, the beauty of it is not this two-thirds majority that we need to enact regulations. And I both ways, but.
No, I just, I mean, given the propensity of the planning board that we've seen over the last years. If a, if a citizen's article is presented, how can we be assured that there will be a, an unbiased evaluation of it in a recommendation? how can we be assured that there will be a an unbiased evaluation of it in a recommendation?
Charity. Yeah, I. My board or this board is unbiased, and they look at every angle of everything that comes before us. So I think that's an unfair assertion. But I promise you, it will be looked at in an unbiased way.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else? Has Penny been able to get back on? Okay, I'm the. Uh, one last shot. Any hands?
Just a happy birthday to Stephen Cohen.
Thank you, Robert. I'm having I'm having a a great birthday. Just to overshare a little bit, I found out I'm three years cancer-free last week, so. Super, super happy birthday to me. Thank you.
Congratulations, Stephen. That's great news.
You have the same birthday as my daughter, Philomene, Stephen? That's why that's why I posted it.
Nice. Well, happy birthday to.
My god, daughter.
Yes.
Excuse me, may I ask a question?
Yes, didn't see a hand up. Go and who is the?
Okay, I.
Statement.
Audio, so. Yes, my name is BJ Henderson. I live on Silver Street. I have. Thank you, Stephen, for everything and everyone on the board. If Article fifty-nine is not passed tomorrow tomorrow, what are the next steps going forth, in particular for homeowners with current short-term rental leases? I think this is important for a lot of people. And I'm a little confused as to whether or not to get a lawyer to discuss this or what are the next steps? That's that's what my question is.
Yeah, David, do you want me to try that?
Who are you? Are you passing that off to me?
No, no, I'll 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 try it if that's okay. I don't. So that is a very good question. If Article fifty-nine is not adopted, then short-term rentals would not be in allowed use under the Nantucket zoning code. So that means that the you go back to the judge's decision, and the judge says that the Nantucket allows for ancillary uses and does not say whether or not short-term rentals could be an ancillary use. It doesn't say that ancillary short-term rentals are allowed, but he does say that short-term rentals could be an ancillary use. But that issue was not addressed by the building commissioner and was not addressed by the zoning board, and judges don't make issues, you know, first impression decisions. So he did say if that it's possible that the the building commissioner and the zoning board would decide that short-term rentals are in ancillary use. And and so he remanded that portion of the case to the zoning board. The zoning board has scheduled that for a, I think, a June third hearing. And if that goes forward, unfortunately, it is likely to give no good response, because whatever decision the zoning board reaches is likely to be appealed by whichever side doesn't like that decision. So I would say that in my estimation, there is no reasonable way that there will be a legal decision on short-term rentals that would be viable this summer unless Article fifty-nine is adopted, because the only other option is the zoning board. And and like I said, that's that's likely to take a while and and not be legally definitive this summer. So then we're in the position where essentially it's the Wild West and there's no definitively legal short-term rentals, and the town needs to decide if it can legally collect these fees, the taxes or not. I don't know what the answer is going to be on that. The building commissioner needs to decide if he's going to then bring cases against two thousand people or not. I I I do not not jealous of him there. You're likely to see more neighbors suing their neighbors over this issue. It's it's a bit of a disaster. But yeah, that's that's where we are. And I would say that you should, if Article fifty-nine doesn't pass, anybody who has a lease should be consulting an attorney who is gonna give them a a nice shrug of the shoulders on on what whether those contracts are legal now. But it's a good question, because there is no fallback position that has any legal definitiveness to it that could that could be in place for this summer.
Yeah, I I I mean, I think Stephen's for the most part correct. I think that the judge ruled really only on the ROH. And so I think what that's gonna put put the community in a position where people will be challenging people's right to rent in other zoning districts. And so I I think that we are gonna see more litigation before this is over, which is, I I think, really sad for this community as a whole. So I I think, again, it just we were in the same uncertainty we were before the judge's decision, in all honesty. Except for now, we know where the judge is leaning, and it's not in favor. So. Yeah, Frank Daly. I'm sorry. You know what, Frank? Hold on. Charity was first. Charity, please.
I just wanted to ask Steve. You used the term ancillary. I thought it was accessory.
Uh, yeah, that was a slip of the tongue. It's accessory. That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
Good afternoon. This kind of dovetails into what I had in mind as well. A lot of the discussion amongst the community is based upon these terms that nobody's really understanding, because I don't think they're properly defined, and that is accessory use versus primary use. I think there's a large misnomer of what is or what is not allowed, and a lot of the community is basing their opinions on these terms that, in my estimation, are not defined. So I'd like to ask that question to the board and then to Mr. Cohen as well. If there are definitions and if they are defined, which I don't think they are, what exactly do they entail?
Frank, I'll give you the quick answer. They're not defined. That's the problem. That's why the judge sent it back to the ZBA.
Exactly. Through you, Chairman, if I could just follow up with this. Again, just knowing how many people are basing their opinions and what will be their votes upon those two very simple words. Could you expand on some of the ramifications of what that means? In other words, people are saying, well, if you it's your primary house, you get to rent it out. This court case means nothing to you. And in my understanding, that's not the case. There is no such thing as primary. There is no such thing as accessory, and there's no one to determine what that would mean anyway.
Well, I think that the if fifty-nine doesn't pass, the ZBA is gonna have to determine that.
That's right.
And and an accessory use in general is a a use that's submissive to the primary use. So in other words, what what their position or what they're trying to say is is that 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 accessory use needs to be less than the primary use. So in other words, if you live in your house for thirty days, you can rent it for twenty-nine. That's that's and I'm not saying that's our law. I'm saying that's the general principle of accessory use. Stephen, is that?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the bylaw defines ancillary as something that's subordinate and customary. So so all we have to do is show that it's been done in the past and that it's subordinate. But what does that mean? You know, like, those are very broad terms, and that's the problem. That's the reason why this judge sent the case back to the ZBA on that issue. And and, you know, frankly, the zoning board of appeals of Nantucket has a long history of not being of not substituting itself with the legislature. In other words, they don't generally like to make rules. If something is vague, they usually send it back to town meeting, and I think that's a good position in general for them not to make up rules. And and I I suspect they don't want to start doing it here. I suspect that they will tell town meeting, you should be making up the rule, not us. But if anybody tells you that you're gonna be okay because you meet X standard or Y standard, that person is just telling you what they think ancillary means. But unless they're wearing a a black robe and have a gavel, their opinion and my opinion and David's opinion, everybody on the Zoom, all of our opinions are meaningless.
Mr. Chair, can I just piggyback on that?
Oh, please, Joe.
So the one thing that town council said to the Select Board, he said, I can weigh in on the great case and war case, but I cannot weigh in on everyone else's property, whatever. Everyone that is in the STR or has an STR should call their attorney and have them look into it. So that's where they should be able to, you know, give those definitions and help them make sure that they're not operating something illegal or they are legal. So, you know, that's was a recommendation by town council that he gave to the public. So I just want to reiterate that. Frank, if that's what, you know, if you're concerned or have any questions, I I would call your attorney, you know, ASAP. Thank you.
Right. Thanks, Joe. Charity?
Oh, I just wanted to ask. Having read the decision, was there not some kind of comment made about renting in the Nantucket tradition?
I I don't have the decision in front of me, Charity, I to be honest with you.
Uh, there there is, and the judge says that's up to the zoning board to figure out. I'm not doing that. That's so. And, you know, frankly, Charity, your idea of what the Nantucket tradition is is one thing, and everybody else on this call is gonna have their own version of it. That's not a rule and or a law that people can implement.
But he did acknowledge it.
Yeah, he said it might be that that the accessory use might be legal under Nantucket's bylaw because Nantucket appears to have a tradition of short-term rentals. But what that tradition is and whether or not it falls under the accessory use section of the bylaw is something for the zoning board to work out. Or better yet, I would recommend for town meeting to put some put some clear rules in place. So that, I think, is where we are. I mean, really, what it gets down to is if the question is, can you have certainty of what's legal and what's not legal without Article fifty-nine, the answer is no. Only the zoning board can rule on that at the current status, and and that's likely to be appealed. So I don't see any viable scenario in which this summer there would be a legal answer to that question.
Right.
So we'll go to the zoning board if fifty-nine goes down. Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Charity. Um, any other hands up? Billy? All right.
No, no hands.
I would entertain a motion.
Do adjourn.
Nope. Try again.
Just, Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify the the motion is on the revised language, correct?
Yes, this is a motion to close.
Yeah, I'm make a motion to close public hearing.
Nice try, though, Joe. Motion made by Nat, seconded by Joe. Nat?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Okay, gentlemen, on to the merits.
Mr. Chairman, I'll I'll make a motion at this point that we revise our previous motion from table to positive recommendation.
Second.
And.
Were you good? Leslie?
I just want to clarify that Barry's motion is a positive recommendation with the article as amended by the proponent.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Leslie. So I was. Hope I was hoping that was intact, but I knew that you would help refine it if necessary. So that that is gonna be my motion still. Thank you.
All righty, so motion made by Barry, seconded by Nat. Discussion? Okay, Barry?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I am gonna be consistent and and vote no, and and my no vote again is based on my concern about this community being able to bridge the chasm that's been created to come with reasonable regulations if fifty-nine passes. So. Thank you. It gets a positive recommendation. Everyone have a great day. I will.
Thank you, everybody.
Motion to adjourn, sir.
You got beat to it, Joe.
Well, I look like you were gonna say something.
Yeah, you did. You did. It wasn't true.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Barry, seconded by Joe. Barry?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Thank you, everyone, for showing up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.